May 4th, 2023. The Association of Education Education is called to order. First item on our agenda is prayer for all Bible religious. Please stand in between the fourth prayer together and may stand before the Lord. Father.
Lord, amen. How will we be done? Let King come. What will be done on earth as it is in heaven? He gives us this day, a day of grace. And he does not trespass. But he will forgive those who trespass against us. And he is the one who attention. But deliver us from evil. For he is the King, the Father, and the glory forever. Amen.
I remain standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda. Are there any changes, Dr. Hoover?
Yes.
Any changes? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda presented?
It's a motion.
Have a second.
Aye, second.
All those in favor signify by a say aye.
Aye.
Any votes please say aye. Motion carried unanimously. Now we have our, this is work session two of two. And our CFO, Ms. Cross, is in Albert County today with her son, House of the baseball, getting even. So we will turn over to Dr. Hoover to put this part of the meeting.
Excellent. So Ms. Willis is logging on to her computer so that we can access the videos that Nicole Cross, the CFO, put together for us. So she has a great description for us that specifically focused on any of the changes or highlights that we talked about in the prior meeting. As you know, we continue to get budget information along the way. We get different updates from the state at different periods of time. And so this, in her presentation, she'll articulate what those changes are. Ms. Cross is available over phone if anyone has any questions.
To our second budget work session. We'll begin first with a review of the general fund. We discussed the general fund in our last budget work session, but we had a few updates that I want to bring to your attention. The first thing, that our net debt increase is 710%. Mr. Knight has a positive increase of 13.6%. So this will increase our revenue to $566,000. And we will keep our loan rate still at 18.722. There were no changes to the QBE from our last meeting. It is still $15 million. And there's been a slight change with foot heels. If you'll remember at our last meeting, I discussed that due to Houseville 87, the heel model has changed. We initially anticipated that they were no longer going to be able to find the use of facilities reimbursement. We originally got $150,000 in prior years. We will be able to get a reimbursement, but it has been decreased to $75,000. But we currently pay SROs out of that $150,000 allocation in an amount to about $50,000 a year. Now, the heels will contact directly with the city for the SRO services. So we'll no longer be obligated to pay for them. So we really anticipate no net change with the heels. So this is another recap of our general fund estimated budget for next year. We anticipate our total revenue to be about $24.2 million. Here is once again an allocation of our tax status projections. And you can see here of the 13.6% increase anticipated. Next is another review of our QBE. There were any changes here since last meeting. And then a few changes in our expenditures. First of all, with our salary benefits. Currently, our salary benefits account for about 86% of our general fund budget. So this is a big portion of our general fund budget. Certified increases, we have made at 5% to all levels. At the last meeting, we anticipated a $2,000 increase to each staff based on the governor's proposal. In talking with other districts and within our RESA, everyone has decided to do a 5% across the board since that was what was suggested for classified salaries. So we have matched up with our certified salaries and we have increased all levels to 5%. This brings our minimum raise for certified staff is 5%. Most also get a staff increase based on years of experience. This brings the average increase for our certified staff to about 8%. But can go as high as 10% depending on the step that they are experiencing with their level of years. The call to the 5% and increase staff for 165 certified employees equates with increase in our budget of about $745,000. I wanted to note that the increase in teacher salaries for a beginning year teacher from FY '20 to FY '24 has increased 16%. In FY '20, the beginning teacher salary with a bachelor's degree was $4,865, and now it's currently $47,304. Our classified salary increases also are suggested of 5%. This brings our minimum hourly rate to $10.56 per hour, and this is an increase to the $10.06 per hour. Just with examples of increasing salaries from FY '20 to FY '24 for our classified salaries. Paraprofessionals have increased 18%. And you'll see the FY '20 beginning hourly rate was $993, and now it is at $1168. School nutrition assistance, and all of our nutrition employees either work anywhere from five hours to eight hours per day. And we've increased our starting salaries 23%. Bus drivers are paid on four hours per day, 11% increase over the last three years. School secretaries and registrars have seen a 12% increase in starting pay. And school blue teachers have seen a 23% increase in pay. But I bring this to your attention to let you know that over these last few years, we have increased our salaries. We have become more competitive. When we compare our salaries to those districts around us, we are very competitive. Another page here highlighting some of our expenditures. There's no real changes here. New positions stay the same. We have these new positions this year. Our TRS map, it remains at 19.98% and not changed. We discussed the state health premium benefit increase monthly contributions per employee. This is one of the largest impacts on our budget. For certified employees, this increase went from $945 to $1580 per month. This is a 67% increase in the premium. And I just wanted to note here that for our 138 certified employees who elect state health, this is an increase of over $1 billion. This impact is about $4.15. Now, most of our certified bids reimburse our QBE funding from this day. State health benefit plan contributions for classified employees this year will increase $250,000. Over the next three years, there is a phase in to where it will, in FY '26, increase to the full $1580 monthly. But the current year is a 26% increase in the premium. We have 102 classified employees on average who elect our state health benefit, and we see a total increase here of $306,000. This is an impact that's equal to about $1.21 million of total tax. And here, I want to point out, one of our biggest challenges is salaries. But I, you know, we have a lot of our employees who note that they can go to several places around, including, this is just an example, at Bucky's, where you can see cashier's begin at $16 and you have all the way up to $31 an hour. And when you compare that to average paraprofessional pay in our state, which is $9.08 to $11.84, and I'm happy to say we're slightly over that average. You can see where we have sometimes difficulty in keeping up with being competitive to these businesses around us. We do want to point out our paraprofessionals and several school employees are 190 employees. So there are two months during the summer where we're unable to pay them because school is not in session. But I do want to make sure I let you know the impact of salaries and how it will continue to be a challenge to recruit and retain employees in these areas. This is just an employer rate for TRS at historical analysis. TRS is our future retirement system. And back in 2020, we saw a slight increase, but now a slight dip. And our TRS system has remained pretty relatively solid, and we remain at 19.98% of salary. Next, we have a review of our classified health insurance rate. And as you can see, this year, it will go up to $1,195. And over the next couple of years, it will increase to $1,445 and $1,580. And this is a huge increase. One of the most challenging increases we will see is how we're going to provide classified health insurance for those employees at this rate. As we discussed in our last work session, this would mean that $50,000 a year or perhaps repaying more for health insurance premiums than we are for some of our employees. So this page is just a summary of our salary and benefits projected for FY '24, and we're at $20.8 million. As you can see, this is a $2.4 million increase, which all is attributed to the 5% salary increase as well as the certified and classified state health insurance premiums increase. Next, we'll talk briefly about our operational expenses. We really have been eyeing these and kept them to a minimum increase. As you can see, our operational increases only increased about $114,000. This is though we are able to provide those 5% across the board salary increases for our employees. Next, I just want to point out, one of, another topic that we need to keep an eye on on the next couple of years is transportation expenditures. And this is a slide that was prepared by a speaker at one of the webinars I went to recently. And it looks at the cost of transportation and what is actually paid by the state. So if you look here, the blue area is what is actually paid by the state. So this, they pay through, the state pays through a QBE in the form of transportation allowance. And as you can see, this yellow amount is what it actually costs to run your transportation department. So the salary only funds, on average, about 19.5% of our transportation expenses. So diesel costs increasing with the number of routes and in-town students we have, and having to increase those routes. And we'll continue to see this as one area we need to keep an eye on. And this, as we talked about last month in the analysis of our fund balance, we are currently at 19.6% of expenditures. If you'll remember, our goal over the next couple of years is to get up to about at least three months of our expenditures. But we are definitely headed in the right direction. Next, we'll discuss our special revenue funds. Here's a recap of our special revenue fund estimated for next year. We do not receive our allocations from the federal government until October of next year. So we currently just base these estimates on our current year federal awards. But in looking at this, just kind of give you a recap of what most of our special revenue funding falls into the following categories. So we have federal funding in the areas of Title I, II, and IV. These are professional development. This is related to property in our schools. And we receive about 11% of our overall special revenue funding in this area. We see about 15% in funding for special education programs. We see about 14% in prepaid programs. And school activity accounts in our afterpay program account for about 20% of the funding in this area. And most of the funding currently, and will be ending at the end of this year, is about 56% paid as a result of our American rest relief COVID really funding. And I just want to point out a little bit around here, especially at the legislative level, like at the states, they kind of feel like school districts receive so much funding, we have a really healthy fund balance. But what I want to point out is how we unfortunately aren't one of those districts who received that much funding. 5.9 million was funded to school districts based on a formula of the state used, which was Title I funding. Social circle rates, 198 out of 215 school districts. This took an amount of funding. We received about $1,384 per FTE. And if you look here, this is a recap of our RESA in everyone's paraprofessionals. As you can see here, we're definitely one of the lowest ones here with City of Jefferson, actually, being the hardest behind us. And if you look here, you'll see Clark County. They actually received $6,070 per student, which is a huge difference in the amount we were allocated. So when your legislators talk about, you know, how much reserves we have and those kinds of things, it only really has impacted a few districts. We honestly can't say that peers was able to provide any sort of funding for our fund balance. Next, we have our school nutrition department. Here's a recap of our anticipated revenue and expenditures for next year. We do anticipate a slight loss for the current year as well as the next year. We did have a fund balance in the prior year when we were able to provide meals for all students. So we are able to use some of that. But our physics, that really shows in our salary and benefits, as we discussed, will be given a 5% across the board as well as we are having to incur those additional costs for state health premiums. Just some highlights from our school nutrition fund. We have expanded all of our items for selling off campuses. And all of these items meet the national nutritional requirement. These include ice cream, frozen yogurt, smoothies, fresh baked cookies, chips, bottled drinks, water. We plan to expand our current all of our program at both primary and elementary schools next year. We currently expanded them at the middle high school this year. We're looking to expand them in new schools next year. And we're planning to offer a second chance breakfast to increase our breakfast sales at the middle high school. So I want to point out that our school nutrition departments have done a wonderful job. They're providing not only nutritious, good, tasty meals, but we're also looking at ways we can continue to increase our revenue in that area. Here's just a look at some of our milk participation numbers. If you look at the gold number, that was FY '22. That is when we were able to provide all meals for all students at no cost. But if you look at the bright food number, that is where we are now currently. So we've really done a good job of stepping up from where we used to be, take for say at this grade line, and to where we are now. So we really have ramped up the number of students who are eating in our nutrition. And here is a quick snapshot of our most valuable expenditures. Salary benefits account for about 51% of the total budget, but food costs and packaging costs have just been soaring due to inflation. And here's just a look at some inflation numbers. And if we look at food at home, which is kind of where we are in the grocery section, an increase of 24%. A, the loan increased 94%. And we've seen a little bit of leveling off there, but needs 23%. So our food costs have grown tremendously as well as packaging costs that we are having to use within our cafeteria. Next, we'll look at our capital projects fund, which is our slots fund. We are estimating revenues of about $2.2 million this year and expenditures of about $2.2 million. We really, our current year budget, we really experienced a better than average what we thought. We were pretty conservative with this 1.9 million estimate. We are still seeing anywhere from 15% to 20% increases over the prior year. I had planned this budget pretty conservatively at about a 5% increase. Next year, we're still planning conservatively with about a 5% increase. We expect we'll probably receive higher numbers, but we're still being pretty conservative. And we're not quite sure if we will see a recession if inflation will continue to be a struggle for us. And then here's our $2.2 million. Notice that being in instructional type expenses to upgrade our buildings. If you look at our ELOS collections, this is just our wealth collection over the last five years. You'll see the dark blue is the current year end. And you can see we continually continue to increase. This gray is from an audit that was done. So it was a one-time adjustment. So it's not really something you can compare to in that year. But as you can see, our slots continuing to collect and continue to grow, and we're hoping that continues. But we are conservative in our estimates. Here is a detail of the expenditures that we are planning for next year just to have you, you know, give you an idea. We have known expenditures regarding updating laptops for baking boards and then some miscellaneous technology in each school. We're looking at replacing curtains in our media middle school activity center. In our high school gym, we need to better our sound system. Replace an HVAC unit. And then we're looking at upgrading our locker rooms and bathrooms. We're unable to currently use a lot of our showering spaces in our locker rooms. There aren't any lockers, or if there are lockers, they are broken. And a lot of the bathrooms are missing stalls or have stalls that are broken. So we're looking at just going through a general upgrade and remodel in our high school gym area. You'll also see a remodel in our middle school bathrooms as well as our high school campus. So a lot of our partitions in the bathrooms, a lot of our toolsets, all be updating and replacing. So these are estimates. We're currently working with some, our engineering firm to come up with some, you know, more firm estimates and we'll keep you updated. But we're looking to, you know, stay on top of any issues in our high school and middle school to keep that building up to date. We, at our primary school, there's a section of our pre-K pub that needs a new roof. We are, we have one piece of emphasis remaining in that school. That needs remediation, and it'll be about $11,000. We're going to continue to repair bathroom floors at an elementary school, and an estimate costs about $25,000. At the middle school, last year, we replaced 10 of our HVAC units. We're going to continue that and replace 10 more at a cost of $65,000. I discussed the bathrooms. At the high school, we are working on an intercom and security system upgrade. We are applying for a copse grant in the federal grant through the Department of Justice. The grant is estimated about $500,000. There is a match of 25%. So we have an application here for $125,000. Media center monitors of about $3,000. And I've talked about remodeling our bathrooms. Administration, these are just some updated technology needs in some of our administrative areas. Hanging, we are planning to keep up to date on our hanging schedule and paid walls of bathrooms at our middle high school. Textbooks estimate at all schools of about $90,000. School buses, we have three buses on order. If you'll remember, last year, we received school bus funds for five buses. Due to some of the supply issues, we've only been able to secure three on order. As you can see, the state allocates about $88,000 per bus, and they're currently about $120,000. If you'll remember, that's probably about a $20,000 increase to what we had seen in the past. So the cost of buses has increased significantly. We are adding in these special education rounds, as we discussed earlier, in order to keep the number of children on our best, at a state level. A maintenance truck, we currently have a maintenance truck. It's about $350,000 miles on it. So we're looking to upgrade that to simply a truck. We don't need a pool bed liner or anything on that one. This is just a use I made to be able to carry tools around and take furniture from one school to another. Athletics.
Mr. Callahan raised his hand with a question.
Do we, um, do we have two trucks?
I know, I believe that we do have two right now, and that one of those is a $350,000.
Because I remember buying one a few years ago.
Yes. There were two. And the one that we're looking for won't be as elaborate as that one. So it really is more of like, I write there, 350.
And the one with lots of four doors.
Mm-hmm, yes. And they use it. So one of the things that we, that we've worked on this year is to add another maintenance person so we can do a better job of taking care of the facilities.
So poor, I mean, so scraping. No one makes a figure we have or what we have.
That's right. And the buildings show it. So we've got to do a better job of taking better care of them. And we think we're getting together the right team to be able to do that. Also to help us with some supervision with custodial services, too.
This is a set aside. So currently, we anticipate having to replace the turf field at the high school in FY '25. The estimated cost is around $500,000. So I'm going to set aside about $250,000 this year to help for that cost that that costs in the next year. And school nutrition, we are currently in the process of analyzing all of our equipment and replacing baking equipment in some of our kitchens. So that brings our logistics expenditures to about $2.2 million. Finally, next steps. So at the next Board of Board meeting on May 11, we will present the definitive budget for you. After this time, we'll have it printed on our website as well as have copies for any public citizens who would like to review. We will need to have two budget hearings. I have one proposed on May 25. And I'll give the option, depending on what works on your schedule. It is a public, open meeting. It's nothing where anyone has to vote. So it does not need to be all of you there. But I'll give the option at 11 o'clock or 5:30. If you could just reach out to Carrie Willis and let her know which one, which time works for all of you. The second one, we'll play it to half within our work session at 6 o'clock. That will be our budget hearing number two. And then finally, we're planning to adopt the FY '24 budget at our regular board meeting on June 15 at 6:30. Now, I apologize for not being here tonight. I appreciate your understanding and allowing me to attend the playoff game for my terms. But if you would like to schedule my meeting, we could discuss any of this of the budget before our next meeting. When the budget is presented to the public, I would be glad to sit down and meet with any of you. Just reach out to Carrie Willis and let her know, and we will get it settled. Thank you.
So the turf field, actually, the athletic facility opened the fall of my first year here, which was in 2013. I think 2014 was my, 13 was in my first fall. And we, and you all were aware of that when you put it in. There's a few that were here on the board that the turf field is something that you have to repair and replace at certain points in time. So did that come as a surprise or a concern to anyone?
Maybe the number, but time for a football fundraiser, yeah.
I didn't remember.
Okay.
About 12 years.
I'm more than likely to replace it. I have it though. Like about two feet deep, something like that. Two feet to 300, when you put it in. Something like that, that was the cost. The side was around a hundred with the tan.
Carrie, I borrowed this.
Interesting. Ongoing maintenance as well. They go through there and vacuum up all those how many million dollar little rubber beads and cleaning in the beads and spraying back on.
Oh, yeah. It also has, there's a water spout that's down there. And it's great fun to watch them clean that field because it is a very powerful spray. So Mr. Callahan, if we have any questions, again, I'll probably be happy to answer any of them that you have. If you'd like to do a deeper dive, I know some of you are more interested in going down into the particulars for the data. So Nicole and I will be happy to meet with you and go through those pieces. We want to make sure that everybody feels very comfortable with the process that we're handling and with the different money that we've set aside in different places.
Is there a sense about the ongoing issue with building maintenance, especially in bathrooms? And having worked in the building, I understand the source of the problem gets off the bus a lot of the time. Has there been thought, plans? Other people are doing things that are innovative to keep the destruction in the bathrooms to a minimum? Because the damage is self-inflicted in many cases.
No. There is, there's going to be damage wherever human beings are. However, we do know that when the buildings are maintained well, the kids are less likely to damage them. It just sets the tone. That's not how we behave here. And quite frankly, we've had some serious concerns with the company that we consult with for custodial services and how frequently or infrequently they are doing the things that they've agreed to do for us in our contract, which is one of the reasons that we are working to secure more help with our maintenance department. We really want our principals to be able to focus on improving instruction for kids and not having to check whether or not the toilet paper has been replaced. And so we're trying to build better processes where we can have more. And so we're, we're trying to build better processes where we can have more frequent supervision, but we do know that if we do a better job of maintaining them, then the kids are less likely to destroy them. Our positive behavioral intervention systems also help with that. And where damage is occurring tends to be our middle school. And so our middle school team is aware that that's a concern and they have changed their monitoring processes.
So our attendance and your work sessions.
To be able to decrease the opportunities that children have to be in there for long periods of time. So it's a multi-pronged process and we're, and we're, the kids deserve better facilities. And especially for our students, our basketball teams and volleyball teams that use the high school athletic area, those facilities just really aren't up to par when you compare them with the facilities that we have down in the athletic activity center. So we are going to get better.
All right. Have a motion to adjourn. Have a second.
I say it.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes, please say aye. We are adjourned as it relates to our budget meeting. And we think we need to start our main work session. The May 4th, 2023 work session for the Social Service Board of Education is called Order. We had a budget meeting just before this and we decided our prayer and pledge of allegiance would stand for this meeting as well. So I will move a motion to adjust our agenda to remove those items from this meeting. So, have a second.
I say it.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes, please say aye. Motion carries now, I must flee the agenda, just revised for those directions. And so next, we have approval minutes. And you'll see the April work session minutes. One, and then you have the budget, budget work session, the first one there. And then you have the regular April board meeting minutes.
I thought I saw something on the April board minutes that indicated the superintendent was Dr. Hooper.
Yes, that is, that did happen. For whatever reason, I'm not sure. I noticed that in printing them out. I've gone back and fixed it. It had something to do with recording attendance. I'm not sure where the glitch was, but it's been corrected.
Very good. Have a motion to approve all these agendas as presented.
So moved.
Have a second.
I say it.
All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any votes, please say aye. Those agendas are approved. Have no more comments. Now we'll go to superintendent for.
So for our enrollment updates, we are proud to announce that we have increased in enrollment by 10 students, which is unusual at this time of year. But we have had several months where we've had small, but decreases in our student counts. So increasing by 10, primary school increased by six students, the elementary school increased by three students, middle school increased by one student. The high school had no changes in their total enrollment at this point. This is the time of year where we're having meetings with our parents of students who are here in and out of district capacity. So if students aren't meeting our high expectations for academics or for behavioral sorts of issues or concerns, or attendance issues or concerns, we're letting those families know that if the situations aren't resolved, then their child won't be eligible to attend in the next year. Just wanted to call back to your attention in case you're getting any calls about those things. So please let us know if you have questions, anything related to our out of district enrollment.
And then we have superintendent, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. So we are very proud that the board was able to meet the criteria for the distinguished board last year. And so there were a few things that we needed to do differently in order to be able to apply for that particular designation. And so it required that each board member complete a self-assessment. And I believe that Carrie's communicated with you about those. So if you haven't had a chance to get that to Carrie, if you wouldn't mind getting them to her by the end of the day tomorrow, that would be really helpful so we can get those pieces organized. And then last year, another unique aspect for us included needing to have a distinguished committee where we had an opportunity to convene two board member representatives as well as parent representatives to review the self-assessment and then do a rating of the, how well the board has been meeting the criteria for the exemplary, exemplary category that we would be competing for this year. So one of the things that's requirement from GSBA is that the two board members that participated last time on the distinguished committee aren't able to participate on the exemplary committee this year. So the exemplary committee met on one occasion, and I believe that it was Mr. Callahan and Ms. St. Flin who participated on the committee. Is that correct? For distinguished, for distinguishing.
Last year, yes.
So, so this year, we ask that you've not volunteered to participate, but that some of our other board members agreed to participate. And it's just an opportunity to meet together on one occasion. We have some ideas about community members who've been really involved that we think would be really helpful for us to extend the offer to. We are considering Dr. Ray and also Andrew Dykes, who's participated extensively with our Portrait of a Graduate work as parent or grandparent representatives. And we then need two volunteers from this group. About any of you that think you might be able to give us an extra hour, hour and a half to go through the self-assessments and help us to go through the rating tools so that we can submit that to GSBA.
Nobody's objection on volunteer? Somebody wants it worse than I do.
Any others?
I'll do it.
Great. Thank you. And so we will chat with the two of you to see how we can work around your schedule and then build opportunities for the others that need to participate after that. All right, it would be sometime in month, during the month of May so that we can get it, get the information to GSBA pretty quickly because they have some tight deadlines. So the next thing that we wanted to discuss, we wanted to provide an update for you regarding the SLOST and the GO bonds. And so Nicole has a little update for us there, just wanted to visit us again virtually.
Good evening. Provided some information about our SLOST general obligation bond. Attached is some information describing the bond. It was explained that this bond was approved as part of the SLOST extension by voters last year. You can also see some analysis of why I did adopt this often used. And this is in order to go ahead and start your project instead of having to wait the full five years until all of your collections have been received. I did an analysis here for you of the anticipated collections and debt payments that will require for this GO bond. We were very conservative with our estimates on those proceeds. These proceeds were estimated at about a 3% increase per year. As I discussed, we have been seeing anywhere from a 10 to 20% increase over the prior year in our collections. So we don't anticipate having any issues. We're still allowing a balance to pay for other needs within the district during that time. Next here is how we plan to issue the bonds. As you can see, we plan to issue our amount of bonds at 13.1 million. These bonds are anticipated to bring in a premium on that issue of about 1.8 million. We plan to have estimated earnings on those proceeds of about 759,000. So this will provide about 15.7 million for our projects. There is a cost of issuance of $265,000, leaving the final balance of bond funds at 15.4 million. We do anticipate receiving 13.2 millions from our state capital outlay plan, as well as we have available cash currently in our SLOST account of about 4.3 million that will be required. This brings our total funds available to about 33 million. This is what our estimated needs are for both the construction of the new elementary school as well as the furniture and picture needs within that school. I did want to point out, we do have some spending requirements for the issue of the bond. Requirements are that at bond issue, we plan to spend 5% of proceeds in six months and the remainder within three years. Our current timetable will require us to pay pre-construction costs of about $1 million through December of this current year. And the new school is estimated to be complete to open fall of 2025. So with this timetable, we currently plan to meet all the spending requirements of the bond issue. I want to point out that these spending requirements just require that you have a reasonable estimate that you anticipate being able to spend those proceeds in this timetable. There are exceptions. They understand things happen, especially now with some of the problems with given materials and equipment for the school. But I don't want you to be concerned about us being able to spend this amount, you know, within six months and so forth. There are allowances and exceptions to this guideline. It simply states that you must have a reasonable expectation to meet the requirements. And at this time, we do have a reasonable expectation. Attached also, you will find a draft resolution. This is what you will be approving at your next board meeting. This is just a draft that was created in February, so let you see, give you a chance to read through it to see what you will be approving. They will have the actual final numbers in the resolution for you on May 11th to approve. The bond is expected to be priced and all of the information will be included at the meeting on May 11th for you to approve. And of course, if you have any questions at all about this or the GO bond at all, please reach out, let me know and I will be glad to meet or answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions on that? Okay. So with the Foothills intergovernmental agreement in Nicole's prior presentation during our budget meeting, she mentioned that we received actually some pretty optimistic information from our friends at Foothills once they had a chance to really look through the legislation as it was written. Our biggest concern when the legislation was mentioned regarding the change is that we were receiving about $150,000 a year from Foothills for use of the facilities. But then part of that, we were paying for the SROs in the evening, which is pretty, was an expensive cost for us of a little over $50,000 a year just for the evenings that Foothill is in, that Foothills staff and students are in the building. So we were pleased to hear that the majority of the money that we're spending out, the SRO salaries, that they're going to be able to, to handle that on their end. So the money will not come through us any longer, it will come straight through Foothills and they'll be able to take care of that. And we were really pleased that they were going to be able to give us $75,000 for the rental of the facility. So we will use that for the extended cleaning. We make copies for them and keep the lights on and those sorts of things. So they need access to telephones and things like that. So we think that that's a reasonable response. We're really pleased that that's what they were able to work out for us. And so what we would like to consider, what I would like to recommend and that we can vote on at the May meeting is that we continue our partnership with Foothills. And we have an MOU that we would like to be able to sign at that board meeting. Foothills provides a great service, not only for our students, but also for students in other districts who don't have Foothills but live nearby. They're doing a really great job of helping students who haven't been successful in their home school to be able to graduate. And we're really pleased and proud of the work that they do.
Excuse us today.
I think 118.
I'm going to say 121.
But they get ready to get like more because.
I know it folks wait, you know.
Yes. And they're not all our students, of course. There are students from other districts, but we're really proud to be able to get to help students that live nearby. It's been a great program. And if you haven't ever participated in one of their graduation ceremonies, they are beautiful and you will weep and weep and weep because the children not only, because there are a few children that are graduating, their format is that they're there to tell their stories and it's beautiful.
Can you make us swear? And that is.
Yes.
June 15.
June 15?
I'll get more.
6:00.
Where?
John Torrey.
Where are we into that?
I think we're going to.
I know I'm here because I have five students.
Beating the eighth and then.
No, you didn't. It's a little bit later. Instead of Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, it's Thursday, Friday, February at GSBA. But I'll get all the information for Foothills right question.
It's a beautiful thing and something that would make anybody in the community proud that we're able to help, help them to make this happen, so.
Is it appropriate to invite more of the community besides, before it was teachers and parents, the small crowds, the ones I.
I think they would mind having community.
Just an outreach to say, hey, we got another graduation going on over here.
So Carrie, with your social media work, would you mind making sure that that's something that we're sharing now?
That's a great suggestion.
Some of our employer partners in the area, I mean, many of these kids are working in the morning because that's what their schedule supports and they're going to school at Foothills in the afternoon. Some of those professional partnerships might be willing to participate a little bit as well.
Great suggestion. So the next thing that we were going to talk through had to do with the May board meeting agenda. So you can see there, Carrie's going to open that up for us. The topics that we're going to address during the superintendent's report, I intended to call attention to school nurse and clinic aide appreciation, school nutrition staff appreciation, teacher appreciation, and then other comments that we will work on between now and then based on the other decisions that we make in this meeting. Of course, public participation will be an option and we'll let you know if anyone signs up to participate at that meeting. We're going to do special recognition of our students from the different schools. We're very excited to celebrate J.D. Duval on his receipt of the Walton County, the Youth of the Year. And it's going to be great fun to hear him speak, he did a lovely job. Yes.
Shouldn't we celebrate the girls soccer, anyone reading?
The decision was made to keep it consistent where we only recognize state champs at the meetings, but it will be included in Dr. Brewer's comments to verbalize their success. But.
Now that we've become so successful.
We did not, we did not invite the boys basketball team, so.
Did anyone read it?
Yes.
I disagree with that too. I, I think you want people to come to the board meeting, you celebrate. And the more we celebrate, the more people we're going to have to come to the board meeting.
And so if that is a move that the board would like to change, that's fine. That was a decision that was made before I got here. So if we would like to start recognizing.
I remembered that if we're going to do it, I think we should start next year. We shouldn't jump out now and say the new soccer and then we got.
Don't want to hurt.
Yeah, I think we should start the new year if we're going to do that.
Is that something that we could all agree to?
Region title and above.
Region title and above, how about that? So region champions or state champions?
Yeah.
Not region runner-up, not state runner-up? Okay. Great, we'll make that happen.
Right.
Okay. We will also honor our statewide honor chorus. Ms. Rains will be there with some of our elementary students. And then we're so proud that Mr. Harkrove has again received the Athletic Director of the Year award. And then very sadly, we're going to be honoring several retirees in that session. We'll do our regular finance reports. For a district report, we wanted Mr. Robinson to come and share updates regarding the ACT, SAT, and also PSAT performance. And we wanted to do that in a regular meeting format because we would have better attendance there and wanted to make sure everyone was aware of how well we're doing in those areas and in what areas do we need to continue to focus on for improvement. We would go ahead and sign the Foothills intergovernmental agreement, or vote on, I apologize, and then also have the official vote on the GO bond resolution and get those signed if we all consent. signed if we all consent. And then in executive session, we'll still have some folks that will be hiring and talking through any other real estate concerns that we need to talk through. Is there anything else that you'd like for us to add to the agenda, or anything that you think that we need to take away?
Does anybody get queries about what is a PSAT and why do we do it? I just think it's important to put that out, and I knew the results are going to be fine, but just the idea of, it's relatively new, and how that chunk of information can be used can be so important to lower grades, high school teachers, even eighth graders, we've got eighth graders too.
So we will make sure that Mr. Robinson includes that in his report, and then we'll see how Carrie can help the high school to share that information. I do believe it gets shared pretty well at the high school level of parents, but I doubt that middle school parents are familiar with it, so that would be an improvement opportunity for it. Any other concerns?
I have a question.
Yes.
How many retirees do we have?
Oh, I think it's just four.
Is there anything that's special that is on for them?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Carrie, would you like to share what we do?
Yes. The decision was, in the past, they've gotten smaller remontos, but last year, Dr. Hooker thought that it would be nice to recognize those who have had more than twenty years in our district. Maybe it was two years ago, I'm sorry, I can't remember, last year or two years ago. So.
Two years ago.
Two of them, Ms. Fabers and Ms. Joy Howard, our media center specialist at the middle school, high school, will both be receiving a rocking chair. They both have more than thirty, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And Ms. Jennifer Forster and Ms. Priscilla Waters will both be retiring, and they will receive a personalized cutting board.
I think that's what, two years ago, whatever, that's what we gave them.
Yeah, and they were really well received. So we did check to make sure that we had feedback and that it was something that fits value. And then, of course, there will be events at each school, mostly at the school-based staff, they have some pretty elaborate events, and when we're aware, we'll make sure that you guys are aware, if you'd like to attend those.
Any updates on the school visit?
Yes, and so that is actually going to be part of our conversation about when we can schedule the tour of the elementary school. So we have reached out to the elementary school that, the principal of the elementary school, that we, that Nicole and I too worked when we were looking at different facility options and trying to find a facility that was, was going to be the most efficient and cost-effective. And so I don't believe, Carrie, that we've heard back for her on date opportunities. So we're looking during the month of June, and I do have the address for everyone and can share that. Some of you do have an opportunity to get to Gainesville, and I know they wouldn't mind at all if you stopped by when you were in Gainesville, if it was at a different time from our regular time. So we'll make sure that you have that, but we're working to schedule it. I know you guys are excited to see it, sorry.
One thing, just so you know, you have to be careful, because if you have three voting board members in the same, this is a business, you know, in this forum, and you have a meeting. So if we all want to go at the same time, it's fine, we can come here, we have a meeting, we go into executive session, we go visit, we come back, adjourn for executive session, just so you know.
We're thinking it might be fun to do on one of our smaller buses, as a group. We can get a lot of meeting done in that period of time, I promise you will not be bored, we will make sure that it's filled with conversations that we need to have. All right. So thank you for getting to that next piece that we needed to address. So at this point, we don't have new business for action items.
All right, I have a motion to exit regular session into executive session for personnel and real estate.
I second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. I have a motion to exit executive session and reenter regular session. Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to go now to the personnel recommendations from our superintendent. We're going to take the certified on one slate here, recommendations for hiring are Amber Fitzgibbon, Math Teacher High School, Marcy Flowey, ELASs teacher, middle school, Nicholas Fordham, counselor, high school, David Tolleson, special ed teacher, high school, resignation, Patricia Willis, special ed teacher, primary school, and retirement, Priscilla Waters, skill coordinator for the district. I have a motion to accept all these recommendations of personnel for our superintendent.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. We're going to take all the classified on one slate as well. First, the superintendent recommends for hiring Darlene Alley, Nikki Clark, para-pro for the elementary school, Renee Brown, special ed para-pro for primary school, Katie Minnefield, special ed para-pro for primary school, Jessica Osment, special ed para-pro elementary school, Angel Spikes, softball lane coach, middle school, Autumn Stat, kindergarten para-pro, primary school, and resignations, Lamet Barr, special ed para-pro, primary school, and Randy Jantry, class driver. I have a motion to accept all these personnel recommendations for classified staff for our superintendent.
So moved.
Have a second.
I have a second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. No subs, correct. No subsidies. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say aye. carries unanimously.